Welcome, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. We're here for a city council meeting and it's June 7th, 2021. We'll start the meeting with a roll call and determination of quorum.
Nordstrom.
Here.
Wyffenbach. Roberts. Droman.
Here.
Armstrong.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Solomon.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Drew.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, we'll have an invocation by Sharon Duggan, here from the Celtic, I'm sorry, Celtic connection, not the basketball team, but the, okay, take it away, and then following this invocation, then the pledge of allegiance.
It is a distinct honor to be invited to give the invocation at the city council meeting tonight. My wish is to energize and bestow blessings on us all. I pray that your God will guide you always, satisfy the needs that need to be met during this meeting, strengthen you and us to make tough decisions. I pray that we will be like a well-watered garden, like a spring whose waters never fail. I pray that you will be fruitful. Please guide us to do this at this meeting and be productive, let us be effective and decisive. Our beautiful Rapid City is under your guidance, and may you all succeed and enrich the lives of each and every one of us. Thank you for taking the time and the energy. Multitude of blessings to one and all, and may your God walk with you tonight and always. Amen.
Thank you. All right, now for the adoption of the agenda. Okay, we have a motion to adopt the agenda from Armstrong and a second by Lehman. Everyone else in favor of adopting the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now, we have a presentation. I would ask for the members of the mayor's committee for people with disabilities to come forward, Pat Cerny and Heather Hoy, and anyone else who's come. And then also, members from Rapid Skills 360 come forward.
Thank you. My name's Patrick Cerny. I'm the vice chair of the mayor's committee, and our chairperson couldn't make it tonight, so I just wanted to say a few words. The mayor's committee for people with disabilities is a ten-member volunteer committee appointed by the mayor, and our mission is to advance, support, and promote the equal inclusion status and well-being of persons with disabilities in all aspects of Rapid City community life. To encourage and acknowledge individuals, organizations, and employers who contribute to this mission, we have established Above and Beyond Recognition Award that's given quarterly to a nominee suggested by a committee or a citizen of Rapid City. Today's award goes to Rapid Skills Athletic Training Facility. Heather Hoy, who is one of our committee members, will describe how Rapid Skills has shown exceptional dedication to people with disabilities.
Hi, I'm Heather Hoy. I'm the program coordinator for Project Search. Project Search is a community-based program that works with young professionals with disabilities ages eighteen to twenty-one. Usually, we are housed in Monument Health and work alongside them, but last year with COVID, we were out in the community. And while that presented its unique challenges and difficulties, finding rotations and spots and internships, there were some definite blessings, and Rapid Skills was one of them. We found Rapid Skills and they were willing to host for the first time one of our students. And our student went there and did a full rotation. How many weeks did we do there? Twelve? Twelve weeks. And at the end of twelve weeks, it went so well, not only with Solo, but with his staff, and they hired our student. So not only have they hired our student, they graciously allowed us to host our graduation there as well. Solo and his team have gone above and beyond for my young interns as well as other young adults in our community, and I cannot say enough good about him and his wife. Thank you for everything, thank you for your support, and thank you for supporting our young adults with disabilities, so.
Well, the committee has an award for you, a certificate of appreciation from the committee, and I'd just like to say thank you on behalf of the city council and a grateful community for taking an ethical and moral approach to being a good partner and a good neighbor in Rapid City. So thank you very much.
All of us or you two?
All of us.
Okay, all of us.
Okay, now is time for general public comment. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken on items not on the agenda unless it's placed there by unanimous vote of council members present. We have one speaker request form this evening, and it's from Kittrick Jeffries. And while you're making your way up there, you've got three minutes to address the council, and you can watch these little lights over here, see how you're doing.
Is the microphone? Yeah, there we go. Hi, my name's Kittrick Jeffries. I represent Dakota Cannabis Consulting. I was born and raised right here in Rapid City. I moved away for the last six years to study policy regarding medical marijuana and recreational marijuana and the impacts of that policy. Today, I wanted to talk a little bit about action versus reaction to that policy. Today, you can see some of the packets I handed out to everybody's desk, and in that packet, there's some brief summaries of what's happening in the other jurisdictions in the Black Hills versus a draft ordinance that I've kind of put together with a little bit more clarification on some of those other policies that are being implemented all over the Black Hills, and some of the things I'd like to see addressed. On top of that is more of the action versus reaction in some maps that have little short stories about the reactions of policy that was implemented in those jurisdictions. And at the very end, there's a five-page frequently asked question sheet put together by Dakota Cannabis Consulting, Cannabis Industry Association of South Dakota, Emerald Consulting out of Spearfish, Kenny Law Firm out of Spearfish, Crossman's Cannabis, and 605 Cannabis. Just wanted to talk a little bit too today about the policy that you guys are going to be speaking on. Dakota Cannabis does think that's good policy. I will stand by for any questions and appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And also tonight, Bill Evans would like to have a word.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to reiterate the invitation that was sent out by the municipal band to the members of the council and the city. The band is coming back for our hundred-and-fourth season, I think, this year, and pathetically, I've played in fifty-three of them. You may not know the history of this band, but it goes way, way back, and we have the distinction of being probably the only group in the city that actually had a Walt Disney movie made out of it, the one and only genuine original family band based upon the Van Nuys Family Band. And the cast is ridiculously intense. It's got Walter Brennan and Janet Leigh and Kurt Russell, and it goes on and on if you look it up. It's a very good family movie. The band has been a regular feature of Rapid City, like I said, for a hundred and four years, and we have been promoting the history and planning at events throughout that time, including the Flood Memorial in nineteen seventy-two when Mrs. Nixon came, and we did the memorial for the victims of the flood. For a hundred years, we provided free music for the citizens of the city. Thank you for the city council for funding it. And I might add, there was a big scandal in Sioux Falls because their band is actually older than ours, and the mayor tried to cut that last summer, which caused a huge stink, and they had to reinstate it. Their budget's about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Ours is, I believe, fourteen thousand, so you get a heck of a bargain here in Rapid City. So I'd just like to issue an invitation to everybody. We play every Wednesday night for eight weeks, and we will be doing a pre-fireworks extravaganza before the show on the Fourth of July, so I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, onto non-public hearing items seven, or two through seventy-eight. There are no speaker requests on the items, so that'll take us to the consent items two through fifty-seven with Lance Lehman. Need to pull item forty-two, Mayor? Darla Drew?
Item twenty-six.
Richie Nordstrom?
Item thirteen, please.
Okay, then, any others wish to be pulled from the agenda? If not, could we have a motion then to approve all of the consent items with the exception of thirteen, twenty-six, and forty-two?
Some.
Motion to, motion by Jones, second by Armstrong. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item thirteen, approved step increase in cost of living adjustment for non-union employees, and we'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. If it's possible, I'd like to make a motion to continue this item till the first meeting in September.
Second?
And I got some rationale for that today.
Who was the second?
And I see Nick.
Lance Lehman.
Yep. I see Nick was in the room a moment ago, and I apologize, I've got more information than what I had last Wednesday, so basically, if I can get Mr. Strout to come to the podium and clarify a few things. Mr. Strout, thank you.
Good evening.
As you know, I'm pretty much a supporter of the employees, but I'd like to get a little bit more information on this proposal that's being presented to us. The last time around, we had some information presented to us in December, and we were to get a plan presented by June for another group, and with this group, I'm not seeing a plan. Could you prepare a plan for us? Basically, the big thing that I'm missing is the steps in the wage scale and everything. I'm not seeing that, if I could get that information.
Sure. Where we're at right now is, as you recall, we implemented the AFSMI wage scale in March, and we learned a lot of lessons in that, and one of the biggest lessons is you can do things fast or you can do them right. And we implemented the wage scale because we had to contractually. And after it was implemented, myself and the department directors and the mayor, we did a lot of work to ensure that it was done properly, but we had to do it on the backend because, like I said, and you know this, contractually, we had to install it on a certain date. And so we did a lot of cleanup after the fact, and I think if you were to talk to AFSMI leadership and most of the AFSMI employees, right now, things are good with that. I know AFSMI leadership, they were a partner in ours, and things went well, but it was done after the fact. And so what we were looking to do today is continue the process of building the scale, ensuring that it's correctly, for when it's ready for implementation, that it's done right the first time. Now, we weren't able to meet our July first deadline, and so we were hoping to, this motion would pass, that the employees aren't suffering because we're a little bit behind where we'd like to be. There were no, there were no step increases in 2020, and I still think that's the right decision. There have been no step increases in 2021. So what we were hoping to do is have those in place kind of as a placeholder while we continue on the second half of the year to get our plan in place. And so that's what this looks like tonight.
Thank you for the explanation, but I'm still short a lot of information, and I'd like to get some additional information before I pass a resolution because the last time we went through a resolution, it was kind of like at the eleventh hour for AFSMI, but if we got a little time, I need a little more time to do a proper research and putting together the wage scales for these folks. I don't want to delay their wage increase, that's not my intent, but we don't have a plan, to the best I can tell. And if we have that plan put in place to, so I can make a determination where these folks land in the scale and the scheme of things, where everyone falls on the wage scale. So right now, I'm just not comfortable passing a, adopting this resolution, so.
And I understand, and I think that our wage scale is set, and it's good, but what we're trying to do is go through job by job to make sure the jobs themselves land properly on the new wage scale. So we're not looking at changing the ways, excuse me, changing the wage scale that you adopted in December.
Yep.
We're just double-checking that each of the jobs land properly, and it's taking us a little bit longer. And one of the exciting developments that we've had, and I know Brandy spoke to this last week, is that we found a partner in Elevate who has some tools beyond our capabilities and some expertise, and they're really helping us with those specific jobs that we're having trouble with. And so I don't know if we'll need till September. I don't know if there's significance beyond that date or from that date, but I know that we're really making some headway on that, and I can definitely get you a plan, and I don't know if July first, August first, I don't know what date we can get that, but I understand your hesitation, but this was just done sort of as a placeholder until we can get.
And I think you're giving me rationale why I need to delay on this because the information we need to make a rational decision on my part, at least, we're short that information, so. And I'm using the word "plan" as putting it together, and hopefully you'll be able to present one. If you've got one earlier than September, I'll take a look at it, but, and then we can alter this motion or whatever it takes, but we're just doing things backwards in my mind. We need the plan and then the resolution.
And I do understand what you're saying, and I think I'm just trying to separate the fact that this was just done so the employees are not being delayed. It's been eighteen months now, and so it would be further than that because we're attempting, and being we being the HR department, the directors, trying to do this right, and so we're just trying not to, I don't, we're just trying not to hold them hostage as we implement this on our pace.
I agree, but I just don't want to rush through this because of the circumstances and the experience that I went through last time around.
Understood.
Thank you.
Ron Wyffenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, it says on here we're talking about non-union employees, so I don't know where AFSMI comes into play there. Aren't they the union? Mr. Mayor?
Correct.
Okay. Then the second question I have, and I'm for continuing this because I'm, I have questions, and the first question I have is, it wasn't so many councils ago that we moved some of the employees to the, from non-union positions to union positions, so what the heck happens to those people? They get basically, they get overlooked here? I guess I'd need to have that information in front of me, too, so, Mr. Mayor, that would be questioned, that, I'd like to see that, how that all played out with the people that got moved from a non-union position to a union position, and now we're saying, okay, then you're non-union, we're going to give you all these raises and steps. And then the other question I would have was, years ago, we started down this path with Congry, and we spent thousands and thousands of dollars to set a base for wages and that stuff in the area. They did a lot of research into it, and I guess I'd like to see where we're at with that, if we continued that somewhere or if we discontinued that somewhere because it seemed to serve its purposes for quite a long time. It seemed like everybody was happy with the wage increases, the steps that were happening and that stuff, so I don't know if we're doing something different. So before I'd make a decision, I'd want to see that because I definitely don't want those people that got moved. I'm like, we're playing that, the game with the three shells and like, oh, they picked that one, nope. And they picked, they picked all three shells, and there's no ball underneath any of them for these guys, so. I think by the time we continue this down the road, I would ask if Mr. Strout brings that information available. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If I can answer that, Mr. Mayor.
Nick Strout, go ahead.
So the people that went into the union in March, they were placed on the new scale with a raise, and they're also in line for a July COLA of 1.1%, the same one that I was asking for, for the non-union folks. So contractually, all three of our major unions, FOP, which is Fraternal Order Police, the IAFF, which is the firefighter union, and our AFSMI folks, all three of them are contractually guaranteed a cost of living increase this year. The FOP already had it, and the firefighters and AFSMI are getting it in July. So, and really, what we were asking is just sort of to keep the non-union folks as the same as them. So we definitely did not leave our fellow AFSMI.
Mr. Mayor, I'm still on the clock. Can I clarify myself then? Because I'm asking about non-union people. The people that were, got moved to the union, I want to see what their wages were and where they would be versus where they're going to be now when they're in the union versus where they would be with these raises, I guess. That's the question, and I'll give you plenty. You don't need to answer that tonight.
Yeah, absolutely, I understand now.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to call on Finance Officer Pauline Sumption for a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to also point out, part of this discussion on the non-union employees came when we started doing planning for the 2022 budget. I asked the question because I always am the one responsible for figuring out projections for wages for the next, the next year, and so I asked what the average increase was for the AFSMI employees. With the new wage scale for the AFSMI employees, that puts them at an average increase of thirteen point six seven percent, thirteen point six seven percent. So, which absolutely the wage study showed that they, they were entitled to that, that they were being underpaid. But it also ends up causing some compression issues then between them and their supervisors who happen to be in the not in the union category. So the raise that is coming before you today in this resolution is actually requesting a two-step increase plus that cost of living that Nick talked about, but it's on the current scale that we have now. There's nothing changing on the non-union pay scale today as it is on the city's website. That's the pay scale that they would still be on July first. This would then give the HR department the opportunity to continue to work with Elevate to get that information, Mr. Nordstrom, that you're looking for, to, to come up with a better wage study for those non-union people versus implementing the one that we're not ready to implement when we found out that there is issues with it. So I just, I just want to make it sure that we're not confusing it, that we're moving us to, would be moving us to a new pay scale because that is not the case currently.
Okay, thank you. So listening to the conversation, it seems to me that the motion maker indicated that we would talk about this again the first meeting in September unless the plan was done earlier. Would that be, would it be okay to add that to the motion? Is that appropriate to add that to the motion? It's up to you. And is that okay with the seconder? Okay, so then the motion is to move this to September first unless the plan is available beforehand, and then it could be introduced sooner. Okay, we'll go to Darla Drew now.
Thank you. This is more of a comment. We get so used to city speak that we really don't define a lot of the things when we're talking about AFSMI or Congry or whatever these things are. I like the fact that you defined the firemen's group and the police group, but I think it would help a lot of people in our discussion or folks listening that we define these terms that we throw around so easily, and I think that's something we could just all do more of in the future. Thank you.
Pat Jones?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Brandy presented briefly to us at the Wednesday meeting last week about something they're doing with Elevate, and I had a couple of questions, so I called her afterwards, and this project is just absolutely exciting, working with Elevate to try to find out that what we pay for positions all across the country, what the requirements are, what the expectations are. This council and others often talk about, well, in this town, they pay this, in this town, they pay that, and, you know, we try to compare and contrast, but this, this new partnership that we are getting into with Elevate is, involves a certain type of software that just mines and mines and mines all this data to allow us to make very, very well-informed decisions as to what we pay and what job requirements are and et cetera. So it's a great, great move forward for us to address a lot of the things that have been talked about here, who makes what and why, and are we comparable with other, other cities, other states, et cetera. So this is a fantastic process, and I think our HR department That's the pay scale that they would still be on July 1st. This would then give the HR department the opportunity to continue to work with Elevate, to get that information, Mr. Nordstrom, that you're looking for, to, to come up with a better wage study for those non-union people versus implementing the one that we're not ready to implement when we found out that there is issues with it. So, I just, I just want to make sure that we're not confusing it, that we're moving us to, would be moving us to a new pay scale, because that is not the case currently.
Okay, thank you. So, listening to the conversation, it seems to me that the motion maker indicated that we would talk about this again the first meeting in September unless the plan was done earlier. Would that be, would it be okay to add that to the motion? Is that appropriate to add that to the motion? It's up to you. And is that okay with the seconder? Okay, so then the motion is to move this to September 1st unless the plan is available beforehand, and then it could be introduced sooner. Okay? We'll go to Darla Drew now.
Thank you. This is more of a comment. We get so used to city speak that we really don't define a lot of the things when we're talking about ASME, or Congry, or whatever these things are. I like the fact that you defined the, the firemen's group and the police group, but I think it would help a lot of people in our discussion, or folks listening, that we define these terms that we, we throw around so easily, and I think that's something we could just all do more of in the future. Thank you.
Pat Jones.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Brandy presented briefly to us at the Wednesday meeting last week about something they're doing with Elevate, and I had a couple of questions, so I called her afterwards, and this project is just absolutely exciting, working with Elevate to try to find out that what we pay for positions all across the country, what the requirements are, what the expectations are. This council and others often talk about, well, in this town, they pay this, in this town, they pay that, and, you know, we try to compare and contrast. But this, this new partnership that we are getting into with Elevate is, involves a certain type of software that just mines and mines and mines all this data to allow us to make very, very well-informed decisions as to what we pay and what job requirements are and et cetera. So, it's a great, great move forward for us to address a lot of the things that have been talked about here, who makes what and why, and are we comparable with other, other cities, other states, et cetera. So, this is a fantastic process, and I thank our HR department for diving into it, and Elevate for being willing to work with us on something that is so important to get good people and to compensate them fairly. Thank you.
Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I ask a question, Director Strout, please?
Yes, Nick Strout.
I've asked you this before. I think it's a good time just to, to put it out there. For non-union folks, have we considered performance-based merit increases versus automatic increases?
Yes, and we are, okay, and so to Councilwoman Drew's point, we are, we are developing a program in relation with our ASME folks. And what ASME is the American Federation of State-City Municipal Employees, so think of it as your blue-collar employees, and we're working on, so this is something new for us, so it's a little bit slower than we would have liked, but it's empowering our supervisors and our managers and our directors to understand what that would look like. And so, probably not in 2021, because you have to set the base, you have to set, so you have to say to an employee, if you want a merit in 2022, this is what you have to do. And so, we want to set that base, get a clear understanding, and Councilman Roberts and I, we had a talk last time this brought up, making sure that it's fair, that it's understood, that if people are going to get their merit or not get their merit, they understood the parameters, and then hopefully in 2022, or, you know, beyond, we can get that in place.
That would also be for non-union employees as well?
Yes, and non-union would probably be easier, because we don't have contractual obligations, but we really want to do it with ASME, because we think that there's some, in conjunction, we want to do it with both, because we think there's some, some room to grow there. We think there's some better ways to do things than just every year we come and ask you for a step raise, and it's granted or it's not, and we move on, so.
And I appreciate that, and I, what I really appreciate is setting that expectation ahead of time, so that if I was an employee, I would want to know what those expectations are, so I could try to meet or exceed them, right?
Absolutely, and it's written, and it's explained, and it's, yeah, so it's a process, and in a private industry, which you're more familiar with, it's a little more flexible. We're, we're a little bit slower, but we're working towards it.
I think it's, I think it's fair to give them that heads up, and so I appreciate you working towards that, and thought it was a good time to pop that question back up again. Thank you, I yield.
Richie Nordstrom. Thank you, Mayor. Just a slight correction on the ASME acronym is American Federation of State-City and Municipal Employees, so, just a little bit of difference there.
So, there. All right, folks, we have a motion on the table to delay this to the first meeting in September unless it's ready sooner. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 26, authorize staff to advertise for bids, roof replacement project 21-2654. Darla Drew, I believe.
Councilman Jones was just accusing me of hating roofs. I do not hate roofs. Anyway, so Dale, you put this list together. Thank you very much. I asked for it at the working session, and I see it attached here. Who does the assessments on this roof replacement? I see a lot of them are park stuff, so I'm just wondering where these recommendations come from.
Rod Johnson from my office has a listing of all city roofs, and he tracks the year they were installed, the type of material they are currently made of, and then he does a condition assessment. So, certainly, we have had a lot of hail damage in the last few years, so a lot of roofs have been replaced. However, we do have some out there that are 30 years old. I believe the list, the 20 roofs that we have listed, the average age is probably 25 to 30 years old. So, these roofs are just in need of replacement due to age. So, anyway, Rod Johnson does a fantastic job of monitoring all of our city facilities, and these are certainly worthy candidates.
Well, if the mayor would allow me a little leverage here, I, you know, I hear from constituents that will say, oh, you never repair the stuff at our park, and you never repair the stuff at our baseball fields, and, you know, these kinds of complaints, I hear them quite a bit, that, you know, we don't spend money on them. So, I'm going to read the list here of roof replacements. It's pretty quick. College Park Restrooms, Canyon Lake Shelter on Jackson Boulevard, College Park Shelter, Canyon Lake Shelter, both on Jackson Boulevard, Rushmore Little League Softball Storage, Rushmore Little League Field Dugout, Rushmore Little League Field Dugout 2, restroom, Wilson Park, Robinsdale Shelter Restrooms, Robinsdale Restroom Shelter on East Oakland, executive, GC Maintenance, I'm not sure what the GC is, but Golf Course Maintenance, okay, thank you. Fire Station Number 3 on Federal, Roosevelt Park Restrooms, Memorial Park Tennis Court, Equipment Storage Building, 606 Steel, Old Storybook Island Restroom and Shelter, Canyon Lake gazebo, Salt Storage 2, Salt Storage Number 1. So, we are indeed taking care of a lot of the buildings in our area and, with the public usage, and thank you for getting that list together for me.
Richie Nordstrom. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Alderman Drew, for bringing this forward, because we, most of this comes out of the CIP, and right now, our goal is, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Teck, is that we try to keep this around 6% every year for repair and maintenance of buildings, and this is the biggest portion of that, 6% of our total budget of CIP, so it's definitely a project that's in need of repairs, so go ahead and correct me if I'm in error.
No, that's, we certainly identified funding for roofs a number of years ago, and tried to grow it a little bit every year just for that inflationary thing, so you are correct.
Thank you. I yield.
Pat Jones.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, second by Darla Drew. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 42, authorize a mayor and finance director to sign an infill agreement between the City of Rapid City and Lazy P6 Land Company for the construction of public improvements and acceptance of H lots. Lance Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. Per the applicant, I'd like to make a motion to move this to the next meeting.
Second. Okay, the second was from Richie Nordstrom, and that'll be a motion to move this item until June 21st council meeting. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And takes us through our consent items. Non-consent items 58 through 78, there are no speaker requests on these items, so we'll start with item 58 under ordinances. Item 58, second reading of ordinance 6490, an ordinance to align the municipal election date with the designated date for primary elections by amending section 1.16.020 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Motion approved by Drew, second by Jones, was it? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 59, second reading of ordinance 6489, an ordinance to revise the organization of the Department of Community Development by amending chapter 2.47 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Motion approved, Solomon, second by Lehman. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 60, second reading of ordinance 6491, an ordinance to enact Rapid City Municipal Code section 10.52.090 to prohibit the use of certain motor vehicles on downtown sidewalks, and amend sections 10.52.010 and 10.64.210 regarding skateboards and bicycles on downtown sidewalks. Motion to approve, Armstrong, second by Lehman, and we'll go to Darla Drew.
As you might know, I'm not in favor of this. I, I think that hopefully people can be careful with their skateboards and their motorized little scooters. I don't know, does this include old people on their little scooters, too?
No, that's different.
That's motorized? ADA? Or is, you know, what is it?
It's little motorized skateboards and scooters and such. John Roberts would like to tell you what it is.
Everything ADA compliant can be on the sidewalks. That's federal law.
Okay. All right, well, then I won't complain about the elderly, as I'm headed in that direction fairly quickly, but I, I still do believe that we should go ahead and let these skateboards and, and motorized little scooters go. I don't think that most people that would use them are going to understand the map that's put out anyway. I think we're going to have violations that people don't even realize they're going to make. If we're coming from the school of minds, and it's someone from, say, Pakistan, who's, you know, wants to go down to summer nights, are they in trouble if they use our sidewalks? I just think that we are making a problem where there is none, and so I'm going to vote against this. Thank you.
Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a tendency to lean that way from what Alderman Drew is saying, but I think that it's, uses enforcement issue more than anything. It's kind of like making it illegal to feed the ducks. I don't think we're going to give anybody a ticket unless they abuse it, but I, I understand where she's coming from, so I think at some point, we might have to revisit this and then look at the opportunity there if someone's, so.
And, okay, and if you don't mind, I, I walked this route myself, and if not for about four choke points, I think I might feel differently about it, too. There are some areas where about only three feet of pedestrians can fit through our downtown, and it's, it's light pole placement and things of that nature, so we've, we've done things a little bit out of order with the, with the way we've developed down there.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. I had the same thought, so maybe we can revisit it at some point and see if it, if we can make it viable, so, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion for approval on the table, and that was item 40, what was that? Oh, got lost for a minute. Item 60, we have a motion for approval on the table. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with one no from Darla Drew. Item 61, first reading of ordinance 6497, an ordinance clarifying the status and legality of medical cannabis establishments in city limits prior to the state's issuance of rules governing such establishments by amending titles 5 and 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. We'll go to Pat Jones.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I think it's very premature to be adopting any kind of ordinance. I know that our, our folks have done a lot of work putting something together to bring forward as we work towards this, but I think it's premature. The state doesn't have rules in place. We are unsure where to go with this. There's a whole lot of things that are unsure and unsettled, and I'm not comfortable approving an ordinance that doesn't, isn't supported by rules that are enforceable and in place and ready to go. It's just, it's way too soon, and I cannot support putting this in place yet, because we don't know what's all going on. I think it's a bad move by us, very premature. Thank you.
Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think he can see the question coming, here it comes. It can explain why we're putting this in place. It's basically a stopgap, I believe, and I, if I could ask Mr. Landin to, to share that for the, in, in Lehman's terms as possible, no acronyms, just, thank you.
City Attorney Joel Landin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's, to build on what Alderman Wyffenbach is saying, we're not adopting any rules for marijuana yet, because as Alderman Jones said, we don't know what some of those requirements and some of the rules are going to be. However, at this point, there's a, a law that says it's, becomes legal July 1st, but then, for some reason, gives the state until the end of October to develop the rules. So, we have that gap. So, in between, we wanted to be clear to everybody that we are going to maintain the status quo until the rules are in place. I mean, I think legally, nobody could go out and get a permit for a dispensary until the state rules are in place, anyway. But one of the things that, and messages we wanted to send to people out there is, you know, don't go out and speculate, or if you do, you're kind of doing it at your own risk, because we do plan on zoning and looking at the zoning, and ultimately, where these businesses are located and what the rules that apply to them are going to be, are going to be decided by you. But right now, we don't have enough information to bring those specific rules forward, so this ordinance simply says, we are going to zone this, and it is not allowed in any zoning, and that's, we're solely talking about businesses, because frankly, we don't regulate usage, we don't have any city ordinances on usage of marijuana. This is totally about where the businesses like dispensaries and manufacturing is going to be allowed, and is saying, until we have the, the ability to adopt more detailed regulations, they are not allowed in any zoning district, and then we will bring those forward in conjunction with the state rules likely sometime this fall.
Thank you, Mr. Landin. I just wanted to reiterate that, we're, we've been doing some preliminary work with this. We're not here to think that we're going to try to reinvent the wheel, or hopefully we want to put in, something in place that is conducive to our community and that works. But right now, we have to have something, so there's not a lot of question, there's no gray area right now. This puts the stopgap until, I believe it's Thursday, Mr. Mayor, that we have our special council meeting, that we're going to start the public conversation about how we do this going forward. Appreciate that we talked about the zoning to make it fair to everybody, so that everybody knows the rules going into it, so you don't get halfway down there, and all of a sudden, somebody says, nah, we're just kidding. So, when we get the zoning, then people will know where they're at with it, and I appreciate Mr. Landin's response. So, I believe that's where we're at. We're going to move forward publicly with transparent conversations about where we're going to be in the community to enact the new state law. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And to clarify, there's no special city council meeting coming up this week. It's a working session on Friday between planning and legal and the council members that will attend, and, so, next is Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Landin, I really appreciate your department's work on this, and I know we do have to have something in place by July 1st, so I will be supporting this. I, as I've said before, I believe in the free market, and that enterprise will, will make a way and, and kind of help us decide how we're going to do this. The state will catch up, but in the meantime, we have to have something in place. And as far as, you know, other types of businesses that are questionable in nature, we have no problem selling alcohol, and we know the results of that. We have no problem with casinos, we kind of know the results of that. I think marijuana is a good medicine, and I think that a lot of people would be benefited by its use, and so I will be voting definitely yes on this, so we can have something in place by July 1st.
Pat Jones.
Thank you very much. I don't disagree with anything my colleagues have said, that we need to have something and continue to be working towards it, and our legal folks have done tremendous work. It's my opinion that it's too soon to approve an ordinance until at least we've had our working session this Friday. That was kind of my thought, that we would be able to have, actually have an opportunity to talk and discuss about all the things involved in this before an ordinance came forward. We had the terrific presentation from the legal folks at one of our Wednesday sessions, and then I thought, well, okay, great, that's a great start. We'll have the, the special, or the work session this Friday, and then we can start putting some, some flesh on the bones. I just, I'm not comfortable with this right now until we have deeper discussions on Friday, and that's, that's me. That's where I'm at. And I, I respect what everyone else said. I really didn't need it explained to me in Lehman's terms and, you know, dumied down so I could understand it. I totally understood everything that was going on, okay? But this, I just believe it's, it's too soon tonight to approve even the first reading of an ordinance, because we haven't had a chance to discuss anything that has to do with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may impose upon City Attorney Len, Mr. Landin, and then if Acting Director Vicki Fisher wants to jump in there, but your primary selling point for me was the news conference that you held Tuesday before we had our working session. Could you give us a summary of that working session? And you're welcome to have Acting Director Fisher to assist you on that summary. I thought it was a very good presentation, so.
Well, I don't know if I can exactly summarize it, but I think it, it just hit that, again, the purpose of this ordinance was to maintain the status quo, and that even though we're having a working session on, you know, the upcoming Friday, I mean, what I really view that as is more of a general, high-level discussion about what some of the things you need to start considering are, as far as regulations, and hopefully giving us some direction. And at some point, planning and my office are working on an ordinance and some zoning ordinances, and the planning commission's also involved, and I think they'll be holding some sessions. But, you know, the reality is, this is coming July 1st, and we need to do some things, frankly, before July 1st, and we're not going to have time to get detailed regulations before July 1st. Or probably, you know, by the end of July, it'll probably be closer to September, and I'll have to go through the planning commission and go through that process, and you guys. commission and go through that process, and you guys all, planning commission will have input, all of you will have input, and the public will have input. And frankly, those rules, we'll come up with a draft based on as much input as we can, but, you know, that's just going to frankly be a starting point, and then it'll be turned over to you to decide some of the bigger policy questions. But I think what I view Friday as is a discussion of some of the bigger policy questions. To start that discussion, things like what you should be thinking about as far as, you know, do you want to limit? Do you want to let the free market drive the number of dispensaries? You know, where should these be allowed? What are some of the, you know, considerations of smell or impact on neighbors that we should be considering?
Thank you, Joel. I'd still like to hear from the Acting Director, yeah.
So, layman's terms, and that's the way I've got to understand all of this. What we have before us tonight is kind of a timeout. We're saying, just in case anyone challenges us and says, hey, the law says July 1st, this has got to be allowed, we're saying this is a temporary zoning designation that says we are not going to allow any dispensary, manufacturing, cultivating, or testing for six months. That's going to allow us time to meet with all of you, to get comment from the community, to see where in our community we want this. Should it be permitted? Should it be conditional? What are the separation between other uses? Now, if we look at this similar to what we would a distillery or a brewery, the city identifies what zoning it should be in. We identify what distance it should be from things. We determine if it's conditional or permitted. And the state identifies how they're going to operate. That's the same that we're doing here. We're waiting on the state to say, this is how a dispensary is going to operate. This is how manufacturing, cultivating, and we will adopt those regulations. But this is the voice with all of you, and we're hoping that you're reaching out to your constituents. We want, and we need to hear, what district should they be allowed in? Where shouldn't they be allowed? What are our parameters that we're looking at? So this just gives us a little more time to make sure everybody is heard, and we come forward with the best document that we can for Rapid City.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. Acting Director Fisher, I'll get that title correct, yep. And that's primarily the reasons why I'm supporting the ordinance, and it's a stopgap. Thank you, Mayor.
Greg Strowman.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to point out that, you know, the council members also, in addition to the legal department and the planning department, have been working on this for several months, doing research, talking to constituents, things like that. I don't want the perception to be out there that we're sitting here going, oh, boy, we just started thinking about this, because we've been thinking about it for quite a while, and we've been working on it. But I think it is worthwhile to point out that, you know, as the legal department has correctly noted in this draft ordinance, that there's a, the city's making a preliminary finding that it would be inappropriate for the city to issue licenses at this point, prior to the Department of Health promulgating regulations, governing them. Medical cannabis establishments will not be able to legally operate in South Dakota unless and until they receive a registration from the Department of Health sometime after the rules are adopted, or before October 29th, 2021. So there are, we're limited in what we can do right now, and I think it's wise to have this measure in place at this time, and we'll continue to move forward from there. And I appreciate the city attorney's office, like I said, and the planning department, and the council members that have all been working on this. So, that's all I have. I yield.
Bill Evans.
Thank you. I would just like to ask Mr. Landine, if something were to come up at the working session that nobody had thought of, are we able to amend this before the second reading and pass an amended version?
There are some rules against passing an amended second reading. I think if the change were made, it would kind of be a question if the change were made at the working session. We could work through that. But again, I don't know if we're going to have, again, planning and zoning, generally zoning ordinances have to go through Planning Commission, and it hasn't had an opportunity to do that yet, so.
Well, the only reason I brought it up is because I totally agree with Mr. Jones over there that if this is such a critical thing, then we probably should have had at least five minutes of discussion as a council to talk about this if it's that important. But it seems a little bit we're out of order or out of sequence here, in that perhaps we should have had a working session sometime in the recent past so that as we're passing this, we know exactly what we're doing. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Jason Solomon.
Thank you, and thanks to my colleagues for the great, great points tonight, especially Mr. Strowman. Thought he brought up some good points. I'll just say what I said on Wednesday. I've had folks reach out to me about, can the council stop this? And no, we can't. We have no interest, I believe, in overturning the will of the people, obviously. So what we're trying to figure out now, moving forward, is how to best put this into place with the guidance from the state. So that, just so, if anybody wonders philosophically, this is not a philosophical discussion. The point has been determined already by the people, and so our role is to figure out how to best do it here in Rapid City. Vicki, would you mind, Ms. Fisher, would you mind just answering this question? I know the answer to it already, but this is more for the public's benefit. There is some thought that maybe come July 1st, people are going to feel free to smoke publicly. Can you clarify that for us, whether that's allowed even right now or not?
Well, I will say that smoking, public smoking is not allowed regardless, so that is a pretty easy answer on that one. We might want to go to our chief of police as to whether or not come July 1st, they would be able to charge anyone if they were caught consuming cannabis July 1st or after.
Okay, publicly, at least?
Yes, but again, that's something that the council does not regulate.
Okay. I don't know if the chief wants to address that or not. It's more just for clarification for the community of how we're going to handle this. Will it be treated just as is right now until things are in place?
So the recreational marijuana is still up in the air, working through the court system, so I do not have a clear-cut answer as to whether recreational marijuana will be legalized by then or not. The other thing just to mention, though, even with medical marijuana, there still is an amount. You can't have pounds of marijuana on you. What the medical marijuana, measure twenty-six is allowing is small amounts that would be legalized with a card or however that's designated.
So public smoking is, that's not allowed, or that is allowed?
Well, I think that's something that would have to be clearly defined, and I know, for example, the Sheriff's Association has written a very lengthy document to the working session, the summer session, and really trying to outline some questions that need to be answered. And, for example, who are they going to allow to apply for licenses? Right now, one of the only regulations in there is violent felon. Well, what about folks that have a history of selling to minors, for example? Are they going to be allowed to have a license? So there's a lot of things that need to be dialed down and researched through the state, and I would encourage us to take a look at some of the things that they're researching right now. The other thing I would just put out there, you know, we can learn from the mistakes of other communities. Other, you know, it's been legalized in other locations, and I'm sure it's been legalized in a way, in some ways that maybe aren't as safe. And it's good to know that you are looking into that, and you are researching what other communities are doing and have done, because I think we can learn from their mistakes.
So, Mr. Landine, if I could, just for clarity, this is more the short term, not the, I'm not trying to get into the long-term discussion, but come July 1st, if someone's from out of state, and they have a prescription for medical marijuana, can they go to Main Street Square and smoke, or is that still supposed to be done privately?
I believe that that would still violate the smoking, and that there is a prohibition against public smoking, you know, and I think we'll have to frankly wait and see how big a problem it becomes, and if we need additional regulation, city regulations to regulate that so we have some more enforcement. But, you know, I think at this point, it's hard to predict. But, you know, I would just also point out that private businesses and locations certainly do not have to allow it either. So I think most are looking at, again, not allowing public smoking of marijuana.
I yield. Thank you. Ron Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this all begs the question of, if we don't pass this tonight, I would like to ask the city attorney, if we don't have an ordinance in place on July 1, when we're required to have it, what happens?
Practically, I don't know that a lot happens because somebody, like I said, couldn't go and open a dispensary because they're not going to be able to get license from the state. I guess the dilemma, the concern is, when municipalities have been discussing statewide, is that if you do not, if you've not indicated an intent to zone and regulate it, that somebody could come in, buy a location, and then claim, no matter what regulations you adopt later, that they aren't subject to those. Now, personally, I don't agree with that, and I don't think that would be the case, but it wouldn't necessarily stop us from being in a situation where we would have to litigate that or argue it for a while in front of the courts in order to get a determination. So from our perspective, this just kind of was a good way to put everyone on notice that we do intend to zone and regulate where, and have some, as Ms. Fisher said, some regulations about distances from other businesses and other conditions to help minimize the impact, and where these uses are appropriate. And now everybody's on notice of that and maintain the status quo until we have time to have these deeper discussions, see what the state's doing, and get these regulations in place.
Thank you, Mr. Landine. So it makes it really clear that we're going to establish a law, but now, we're, right now, we're going to tell you, don't do anything until we get the law established so we don't have mass confusion between now and that point in time. And as we develop that, the public will have their opportunity to give input into it. So, I mean, if we didn't do that, then people would be more upset in the long run. So it is a public process that's going to take place. This will put in a stopgap, so there's no questions. Don't come and ask a question because you already see the ordinance is going to be put in place, that nothing's going to happen until the council decides what's going to happen. And I agree that maybe timelines could be different or whatever, but they're not. We can't take the clock and unwind it. So I think this is a good stopgap. It puts our staff in a good position, it puts the mayor in a good position, and the council in a good position to say, we will vet this, and we will come up with the best possible decision that these ten people can make. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve this, correct? All in favor of that motion, say aye. Opposed? Motion passes with one no from Mr. Jones. Item sixty-two, first reading of ordinance six-three-eight-zero, an ordinance amending chapter fifteen-point-oh-four of the Rapid City Municipal Code regarding buildings and construction administrative procedures, amending chapter fifteen-point-oh-eight regarding moving of buildings, and repealing chapter five-point-four-four regarding house-moving businesses. Motion approved by Nordstrom, second by Evans. All in favor of approval, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item sixty-three, first reading of ordinance six-four-eight-eight, an ordinance to adopt the 2020 edition of the National Electrical Code and to amend local provisions by amending chapter fifteen-point-one-six of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Motion approved by Jones. Second, Nordstrom. Ron Wyfembach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have maybe more of a general question. When we adopt these codes, do we look at the ramifications of what happens? I mean, are we involved in the people that are in the electrical business? I'm not sure who would answer that question, but I've seen in the past where we just carte blanche adopt these international codes that are highly politicized and highly, and then all of a sudden, we got issues that come down the road like Arc Fault and those types of things.
Mr. Mayor?
I think Vicki Fisher wants to answer you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That'll be perfect.
So in visiting with Mr. Bechtel, who wasn't able to make it tonight, so these are codes that have been changed, and we're just keeping up with the industry standards, but these did get vetted at the Building Board of Appeals, and this is where those same contractors are members of and take their issues to, and it was recommended that this be approved. So thank you. They did have a voice in it, and I appreciate that you are looking out for them.
Thank you, Director Vicki, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for approval. All in favor of approval, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item sixty-four, first reading of ordinance six-three-eight-two, an ordinance amending sections of the Rapid City Municipal Code pertaining to the International Property Maintenance Code. Motion approved, Nordstrom. Second, was that Evans? Okay. We have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item sixty-five, first reading of ordinance six-four-eight-two, an ordinance to amend and clarify provisions concerning trenching contractor's license by amending chapter thirteen-point-two-four of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Motion approved by Drew, second by Jones. All in favor of approval, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item sixty-six, first reading ordinance six-four-nine-two, an ordinance amending section seventeen-point-oh-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Michael Powell for rezoning request from general commercial to medium-density residential district for property generally described as being located at 306 East Denver Street. Motion to approve by Drew, second by Nordstrom. All in favor of approval, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item sixty-seven, first reading ordinance six-four-nine-three, an ordinance amending section seventeen-point-oh-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by KTM Design Solutions for BH Capital Four LLC for a rezoning request from light industrial district to medium-density residential district for property generally described as being located east of North Valley Drive Terminus. Motion to approve by Drew and a second by Strowman. All in favor of approval, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item sixty-eight, first reading ordinance six-four-nine-four, an ordinance amending section seventeen-point-oh-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by TOE Design Group for Pink Cabin LLP for a rezoning request from office commercial to medium-density residential district for property generally described as being located west of Healing Way between Moon Meadows and Samus Trail. Motion to approve, Nordstrom. Second by Evans. All in favor of approval, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item sixty-nine, first reading ordinance six-four-nine-five, an ordinance amending section seventeen-point-oh-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Long Branch Civil Engineering for Coldwell Banker, Black Hills Legacy for rezoning request from general agricultural district to medium-density residential district for the property generally described as being located north of Catherine Boulevard between Wellington Drive and Tartan Court. Motion to approve, Drew, second Lehman. All in favor of approval, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item seventy, ordinance, first reading ordinance six-four-nine-six, an ordinance amending section seventeen-point-oh-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Long Branch Civil Engineering for Coldwell Banker, Black Hills Legacy for rezoning request from general agricultural district to low-density residential district two for property generally described as being located north of Catherine Boulevard between Wellington Drive and Tartan Court. Motion to approve, Nordstrom, second by Evans. All in favor of approval, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Working Session Committee items. Item seventy-one, approved concession agreement with Canyon Lake Resort for property located at 2720 Chapel Lane. Motion to approve by Jones, second by Roberts. All in favor of approval, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item seventy-two, request by Stephanie Hurd for determination by the city council that there are no feasible and prudent alternatives to the alterations contributing secondary structure in a historic district located at 916 St. Charles Street, and that the proposal contains planning to minimize harm to historic property pursuant to SDCL-1-19A-11.1 as well as Rapid City Municipal Code seventeen-point-five-four-point-oh-eight-zero. Motion to approve by Solomon and a second by Nordstrom, and we'll go to Darla Drew.
It's, is it my understanding, I guess this would be, I'm not sure if this would be for, that all the items that come out of working session have neither approval nor disapproval from the committee, right? So we don't see anything even from the historical committee or historical commission, whatever. committee or historical commission, whatever they're called now, or any of those kinds of, I guess I'd ask Vicki that, in a situation like this, I feel like we almost need some direction. Oh, there's Sarah Hansel. Okay. Yeah.
Vicki Fisher.
But I don't like- Mr. Mayor, so if you look on the agenda memo, the very last sentence, Sarah has put in there that the Historic Preservation Committee recommended approval of this.
They did.
So she's always going to try to give you the history of what the committee did. At the working session, you don't take an action, but we're going to let you know even then what our recommendation is.
Well, I'm embarrassed to say, I did not read it.
That's okay.
Just upfront with you there. And so, yeah, I was just concerned about, you know, what the historical commission had to say about it.
If you have any questions, Sarah is here to answer those tonight.
I don't have any questions on it. I trust you guys.
Okay, did we have a, we had a motion to approve. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 73, approved financial rate-setting policies for solid waste utility, and we'll go to Lance Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to move this item to the first meeting in July.
Second on that by Armstrong. Okay, the motion then is to move this to the first meeting. Did you say first or second?
First meeting.
First meeting in July. Okay. July 6. Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we have a good reason, then I could support it, but why do we need to move it?
I need some more time with constituents and to better understand this myself, even though I sat on the committee with everybody.
Thank you. I'll yield the floor. Laura Armstrong.
Thank you, Mayor. I concur with Mr. Lehman. I do think we just need to, with all due respect to Mr. Teck and his staff and the people that were involved in this, we do need some more feedback from the public. And Mr. Lehman and I did speak with Director Sumption as well to possibly explore some opportunities for those that are on fixed incomes. Just, I think if we just tap the brakes on this just for a little bit and do get a little more feedback and do some more exploring, I'd also defer to Mr. Teck right now.
Thank you, President Armstrong. I guess I would like to thank the team that worked on this from a city perspective. Burns McDonald, Lucrotic, Stacy Titus, Jeff Barber, the stakeholders, Ron Wyffenbach, Lance, Alan Anderson, and I'm missing a couple, did a lot of hard work on this, and a lot of you weren't able to see that work behind the scenes. And it is a lot of work. We started this process a year and a half ago, so it's been a long journey, if you will, to get to this point. We certainly aren't in any hurry to rush anything. We want everyone to feel comfortable, and we will do our very best to answer each and every question. The analysis that was done is correct. It is a fair and equitable analysis for all of our user groups. Alderman Solomon sat in on our water and wastewater utility study, and this was performed exactly like that. So I wanted to emphasize that this policy that's in front of you tonight, it needs to be approved regardless. The rates can be talked about later, but it's the policy that'll prevent us from getting in this position ever again. So that's probably the most important thing on the agenda tonight.
Okay, thank-
How do we navigate that, then?
As far as I'm concerned, you can approve the rate policy and continue the actual rates for a month, and we can bring that back up.
I'm going to yield right now. Thank you. I want to get some more feedback from my colleagues. Thank you.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, just to clarify, I've had some conversations with the staff, and the primary purpose behind what I'm reading in tonight is that the rate, the rate-setting policies is what we're concerned about, and especially for me, is the 35-gallon containers. So if my colleagues want some more information or want some additional information, I can go for that. But my impression is we need to separate the two from each other. And so if Mr. Teck is agreeable to making, with that motion that he suggested is separating the two items and go forward with the rate policy, but having a distinction of educating us further on the policies that what the solid waste division wants to do, I'm okay with that as well. So it looks like Mr. Teck wants to add some additional comments, if I may yield to Mr. Teck.
Certainly. We have two items tonight, item 73 and item 74. Item 73 is just the financial and rate-setting policy. So embedded in that policy is nothing about containers, nothing about operations. It's about how we financially analyze the revenues and expenses and set a rate model so we can determine future rates moving forward. So it's just giving us the roadmap to sound fiscal management practices for the solid waste utility, just as we have for our water and wastewater utility.
Go ahead.
And secondary to that is the next item, and that's, those are the actual rates that the rate model suggested that we implement to meet the goals of our rate policy. And then our goal, once again, is to provide the same service that we've always provided. We're not cutting any services with any of these actions tonight. They will remain the same as they are today.
I think that's a very good distinction because in a previous council meeting, we were having the challenge of separating the two items and making the distinction that we need to do something with the rates. And if we don't do the rates, that means we've got to start thinking about cutting back on service, and that's something I don't want to mess with. So we need to take a little bit longer look at the second resolution that's being up on the next agenda. But this one here, I think we need to get that moving forward. Thank you, Mayor. I'll yield.
Pat Jones.
Thank you very much. I was at the full presentation that was done a couple of weeks ago, and then the shorter one last Wednesday, and I thank you all that were involved with that greatly. It was tremendous work, a lot of work, and it was a great presentation. And it's a fantastic plan, but I don't think it's the only plan that we should look at. And if I'm wrong, I will gladly admit that, but there was a slide or a couple of slides that showed the projections of rates over the next several years. And part of that phased out the 35-gallon can. So my concern is if we approve these rates, we approve then the phase out of the 35-gallon container. And that's the response that I've had on this, is problems that people have getting rid of the 35-gallon container. So, correct me, because that rate schedule said the rates for the next few years and then eliminated the 35-gallon container.
Excuse me a minute. Is that, is that what Mr. Jones just spoke of relevant to this particular item on the agenda, the policy?
No, it is not.
More relevant to the second item?
Correct.
Okay, then I'll yield and wait till the next item. Thank you.
Lance Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a substitute motion to approve this, and I'll save my deferral for the next item.
Okay, second by Richie Nordstrom. Now the motion is to approve item 73. John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and that pretty much took care of what I was going to talk about. I was going to say, you know, looking through this policy, I think that it would be pertinent for us to pass the policy tonight because it really doesn't have much to do with the rates. It just has to do with how we come up with them in the future, which I think is a great roadmap. I mean, if you read it, it's set up absolutely fantastic with a lot of latitude in there for, like, if we're looking for special fees for people that are, you know, on fixed incomes, that can be in here. I mean, so we have the ability here, but we have more of a, we have more control over the rates as a council. This just gives the staff a policy to work by, and it's a great one. So, anyway, thank you.
All right, thanks. So the motion on the floor now is to approve item 73. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 74 is to approve resolution 2021-058, a resolution amending certain fees to be charged specific to the solid waste division of Public Works, and we'll go back to Lance Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make the motion to move this to the first meeting in July.
Second by Roberts, I think. Okay, motion now is to defer item 74 for approximately a month to July 6, and we'll go to Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I can appreciate that. If you all need more time, since it came from our council president and vice president, I'll look forward to seeing their plan within a short order to be able to get out and sell this to the community. I have no problem doing that. I think Mr. Jones and I can set up a meeting in our ward to get public input, bring it back, if that's what's necessary. But if we're just going to sit here and extend this, just to extend it, because for whatever reason, I won't agree with that, but if we're going to extend it to go out and explain it to the public and get their input and see if there's other options, I'm all for that. But I'm telling you, I'm going to hold your feet to the fire on July 1, otherwise you're all going to be writing checks. If you talk to these guys and go out there and see what they got, the issues they got right now with their maintenance backed up, they can't even get their equipment prepared, there's no money. Back in 2012, and some of you may have been on the council at that point, and I'm not going to point any fingers, there was an 8% cut in the rates, and nothing has ever been made up ever since. And I've had that discussion with these guys. There's a lot of fingers that could be pointed in that. We have an opportunity to fix it, but I also understand that you want to get your constituents involved, but you better get your constituents involved then. I sent you all a copy of an email to a couple of constituent complaints. There's some talking points in there that talk about how these guys came to that conclusion. Any of you guys were welcome to come. You never came. Some of you did. I'm just saying. So if we need the time, let's have a plan, get out there, sell it to our constituents so they understand what's going on. I agree with that. I won't disagree with that. But I will disagree if you're just doing this to kick the can down the road for a certain period of time. They have a dire need out there for the maintenance. They've looked at all the options, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying that we have to do this tonight. I'm okay with that. But don't tell me we need a plan and don't have a plan. I think someone mentioned that earlier. That's correct. Our council leadership can bring that plan forward. They're the ones that want to continue this so they can bring the plan forward. I think that Mr. Jones and I don't want to speak for him, but he's been very cordial in directing those meetings. We could have a meeting in our ward, get the input from the people, tell them what we're at. I've had several communications with Mr. Teck, Mr. Titus, and the people in charge at the landfill. They're more than happy to, they just need to know what those questions are. If you ask somebody a question and you say, I got a question, and there's no question, there's no way that these guys can answer those questions. I just would ask you guys, if you say these things, bring the questions forward, give them to all of us council people. We can all vet the questions. I'm sure our constituents all have the same ones, so I appreciate that. Thank you, and I'll yield.
Okay, the discussion is whether or not we should continue item 74. John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Ron, you can point your finger at me all day long. I voted for that in 2012. And you know what? At the time, I thought that was the right thing to do. I didn't imagine we would go eight years without a rate race. But I like the idea of somehow building in, you know, some kind of a, something for people that are on very fixed incomes. You know, in my ward and Lance's ward, we've got a tremendous amount of people on very, very fixed incomes. And you know, especially, Ron, with what's happening in real estate right now and real estate taxes, these people are getting squeezed very, very, very hard. So any place we can save people money, any place that the city can step up a little bit, because I know, you know, until the state steps in and does some of the things that need to be done as far as tax freeze for the elderly and, you know, I mean, it's ridiculous what the state has on its side. So we need to really look out for everybody. I know this is something that's needed. I know it's something that's very needed. I know that there's a lot of us in the community that this isn't going to hurt, but I also know there are people in this community that it is going to hurt. And I really hope, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing what council leadership is coming up on that side, and very happy to give you my ideas on it. Years ago, you know, because I've been here for too long, I remember when we were discussing the rain tax, huh, sorry, I hate to say that, but that's what everybody in Rapid calls it. And that was going to have this built in for people on fixed incomes, and it does. But it's very limiting, you know, just kind of like what the states is too. So I think I want to see what you come up with, see if it's something that's, you know, actually something workable. Because if you model it after the state tax freeze where, you know, your income's got to be $17,000 a year, and your home can't be worth more than $200,000, you know, I think my storage shed in my backyard's worth $200,000 now in this crazy market. So, anyway, that's my two cents. I'm looking forward to this over the next month. I don't think we're going to kill, you know, I don't think this is asking too much of solid waste to put it off a month. It's a long time coming. It needs to happen. I will vote for it when it comes forward, but if we can do something to help some of the people in our community, I want to at least pursue that option. Thank you.
Okay, discussion on the merits of postponing to July 6. Pat Jones.
Thank you. So Dale, now that I'm at the right one, and I apologize for that, this states, and it phases out the 35-gallon can. This is the one that does that, correct? Item 74?
Left them in there because it's a policy decision to phase it out.
The item in front of you, the rate resolution includes the 35-gallon cans for the duration of the rate structure that we're requesting, which is through the year 2025. I had an interview with the journal earlier today, and I'll stand by what I said to them. There will be no changes to service without this council approving those changes at a later date. We have nothing planned as part of this rate structure to reduce any services.
But one of the documents that was shown to us-
The document that's important to you today is the rate resolution that is in front of you and attached to the council that shows the 35-gallon cans will stay there through the duration.
Okay, and that's what I needed to hear. That's what I wanted to be really, really clear about. So thank you very much.
Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. If I can make a request of the staff and Director Teck is that, in the meantime, if I could get some more information on the use of the alleys because of the removal of cans from the alleys into the street in some locations, I just need a little bit more information on that.
That is an operational issue that has nothing to do with any of this rate structure.
Right. I understand that. But they, for me, they fit hand and glove. The two intermingle. So I just need a little bit of help separating that because I need to clarify this with residents as well.
Well, there are a lot of property damage and potential personal injury issues that we struggle with in alleyways.
Yep.
I would recommend anyone go for a ride along with one of our collection drivers through the alleys. It's quite treacherous. So, and we've had that discussion before about, are there opportunities to get out of those alleys so we don't damage things, so we don't potentially hurt somebody? But that's not part of any of this discussion.
I agree. I totally understand that. It is just me trying to clarify that with the public. I get it. And I do not want, and I'm one of those that want to see garbage trucks removed from the alleys as well, because we have to go through the CIP budget, and then that spends more money from the CIP to go into fixing alleys. And then the street department budget has to go in and repair or fix the alleys as well. So I'm all for that. And I just need a better clarification for the public so they totally understand that. So I appreciate your comments. And then removing cans from the alleys as well. Totally on board with that, supported that. And then, Mayor, this will be for you, is that we get some budget questions and issues- And then, Mayor, this will be for you, is that we got some budget questions and issues, and I'll discuss that with you at a later time, but all of this, for me, all fits together. And right now, we're right about here as far as connecting the dots, but we haven't got all the dots connected just yet. So one ties in with the other, and so that, I just need a little bit more time to get that proper information, so.
That's what we're discussing here tonight, are the merits of postponing this for a month.
If I'm sorry with you, I'll discuss the budget items with you separately. Thank you.
Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I direct a question to Director Tech, please?
Yes.
Director Tech, when we, you mentioned the water and wastewater rates that we had to adjust a few years back. Part of that was we had a rate relief program. Do we have any such thing in place?
Yeah. Alderman Roberts referred to that, and yes, we have a utility rate relief program, and it's eligible for water, wastewater, and garbage.
It is, so garbage is part of this program?
Absolutely.
So I think one good reason to postpone this is to explore the option. I think, I appreciate our council leadership, that's a legitimate reason to look at, how do we relieve the pressure off of those most impacted? I think that's a legitimate reason, to answer your question. That said, I think we are beyond overdue to adjust the rates. It's only fair, it's only fair to everybody out here, but I guess I would, I would ask what that program is now and what we, and what we hope to achieve with a new program. I guess I don't know the gap, and maybe that's part of why we need to take the time, but...
Yeah, that's a fair question. I wouldn't be able to speak to the details of the utility rate relief program tonight. I don't have that information in front of me, and I don't have it committed to memory.
And that's fine. And to Alderman Roberts' point, sometimes we have language that is so built on yesterday that it may not even be relevant totally today, even though the spirit of it is good. So I can get on board with postponing this to the, to the question on the table here, to postponing this in order to study whether any rate relief options, what we currently have, and what that needs to be done to be bolstered. Otherwise, we're going to just have to make the hard decision. And because I think Alderman Weifenbach is right, and these guys do need support. We have policy discussion, services discussion down the road, and I think we're going to have some opinions on that, but I think this is separate. I do think it's a legitimate reason to wait so that we can study it more. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Okay. Darla Drew.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I just want to say we sat through two really good, solid, informative presentations. I've gotten a lot of questions from my constituents. I'm able to answer them because I sat through these informative sessions. And when I can give them a good, clear answer, they're good. You know, I could vote on this tonight and vote yes. So the people that I work with in my constituency, yes, they're worried about the thirty-five gallon waste receptacle, but I mean, that is 2025. We've got some time on that one. So I could say yes to this tonight because you guys were so ready, you know, and I'm so ready to just say, "Hey, we need this done." So if you don't, if you aren't able to describe what is going on to your constituents, it's because maybe you weren't paying good enough attention to this great presentation we had twice, and follow-up information that you had, and time to talk to Dale or any of the people on this committee. So I'm ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that, Alderman Drew. I could ask Director Tech how many questions he's had since we've had those two or three presentations, but I'm not going to go there. I'm okay with it. I think she's correct. If you read, you understand, these guys are more than willing to answer the questions, and you can explain to your constituents why it's necessary. I would like, I would like to see the information on the rate freezes or whatever they are so we can have it for, so we can give that to our constituents too, and you guys can look at it and read it if that's what you want to do, make that available to you to see that there is some relief available on some of these things. So that being said, I'll leave it at that, and I can vote to continue it, but I want to find out where those questions are, if I need to lay out a meeting with my constituents. I've answered emails, I've copied in the whole council on those emails to give you some talking points on what takes place. But I do appreciate, if you need more time, I'll get that because there might be a time when I ask for the same. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tech, and thank you, the whole group.
Absolutely. If I may, I just, I would be remiss if I did not thank every man and woman that works for our solid waste division and the hard work that they put in every day. So they deserve a lot of credit, and I'm looking forward to helping them be able to even do their job even better, so.
Alls you have to do is go out there and check it out, and look at the maintenance that's been set aside, and Alderman Roberts had alluded to the question about what happened. We had this conversation out the front door. I understand where he's coming from. I agreed. I talked to Mr. Titus and a few other people about that, how that happened. Hopefully, we can eliminate that from happening in the future, and we can look back in history and say, "What happened? What happened? What happened?" But we know where we are today. I'm willing to continue this item, and I want to see the due diligence done by my colleagues. I'm willing to participate whatever way I can and help them or help my constituents. My constituents call me. I know they called Alderman Roberts a lot, and I can speak for, I know Mr. Lehman gets a lot of calls too. And hopefully, going forward, we can get these things answered and be prepared to either make some adjustments to this schedule or just get her done. So thank you.
All right. Motion on the floors to delay until July sixth. All of the time discussing it on July sixth will be subtracted by the amount of time you took tonight to discuss this. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries with one no. And then we'll go on to item seventy-five under Community Development Non-Consent Items. A request by Long Branch Civil Engineering for Caldwell Bankers Black Hills Legacy for preliminary subdivision plan for proposed lots one through two of Block One, lots one through seventeen of Block Two, and lots one through twenty-two of Block Three in Katrin Ridge subdivision generally described as being located north of Katrin Boulevard between Wellington Drive and Tartan Court. Motion to approve with stipulations by Drew and a second by Roberts. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seventy-six, a request by FMG Engineering for Rapid City Economic Development Foundation for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed Lot Ten of Block One of South Creek Industrial Park generally described as being located south of St. Patrick Street, east of South Dakota Highway seventy-nine. The recommendation is to approve with stipulations. Okay, so moved by Pat Jones, second by Ron Weifenbach. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, under Alcoholic Beverage License Renewals, item seventy-seven and seventy-eight are both license renewals, one for the Maple Street Barbecue and one for Thirsty's eight nineteen. I believe we could take both of those with one vote if the council so wishes.
[inaudible]
Motion to approve by three people. Jones, second by Weifenbach, and all in favor of approval of seventy-seven and seventy-eight, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing items seventy-nine through eighty-one. There are no speaker requests on these items, so that'll take us to item seventy-nine, which is alcohol license, Seed Studios LLP doing business as AB's four oh six Fifth Street for a retail on-off sale malt beverage and farm wine license. Motion to approve, Drew, second Lehman. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Non-consent public hearing items eighty and eighty-one. Item eighty, second reading, ordinance six four eight five, and ordinance amending section seventeen point zero six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, request by John Roberts for Richard and Jennifer Kincaid for rezoning request from low-density residential district to light industrial district for property generally described as being located at thirty-seven seventy-five Diaz Avenue. Motion to approve, Lehman.
Second.
Second by Jones, and we'll have one abstention from John Roberts.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, except for John Roberts, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item eighty-one, request to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero five two by KTM Design Solutions for Six Oh Five Storage LLC for a comprehensive plan amendment to the major street plan for property generally described as being located at thirty-two seventy-six and thirty-three hundred Campbell Street, and the recommendation is to continue to the June twenty-first city council meeting per applicant's request. Okay, we have that motion by Weifenbach, second by Jones. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I understand we have a need for an executive session tonight to consult with legal counsel about proposed or pending litigation and contractual matters pursuant to SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two subsection three. Motion to go in by Lehman, second by Armstrong. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
We're in executive session.[1242.75]
Okay, we have a motion to come out of executive session by Laura Armstrong, second by Lance Lehman. All in favor of coming out of executive session?
Aye.
Okay, next item, and there will be no action required, no motion required on the executive session. So we'll move on to item 82, which is the bill list, and we'll go to Finance Director Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no additions to the bill list, so the total that is attached is $19 million, 76,911 and 92 cents.
Motion to approve by Solomon.
Second.
Second by Jones. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to adjourn Lehman, second Armstrong, everyone says?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned, everyone. Thank you.